September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four study, special study session at six twenty-four P M. And I will call on Jeff Stephens. I'm gonna call on Jason then.
Sometimes we look alike.
I delegated.
You did.
Sorry, just when my computer locked up on me. Of course, you're waiting for do it always takes long, you're waiting in front of people.
Okay. So tonight, we're going to start going through the department budget requests that that came in. This is be reminded, can you go click on this? So last week, as you recall, we went through the general financial forecast and went through where council's been so far. As a reminder, all the departments submitted their executive mayor and the mayor and I, every single department, and we went through their proposals and made some cuts, made some changes, found some efficiencies. I will be pointing those out to you as we go through the budget process. I will say I was very pleased with our our department heads. They were very thoughtful in their budget asks this year. They know that we're in a more constrained environment and we're very thoughtful of what they were asking for and made sure that there was all the efficiencies they could find were identified. So tonight, we're going through largely the internal service, general fund departments, as well as law enforcement and our drug fund. So what we're going to cover in front of you have the department budget sheet that will be in the budget document. So we're going to piece it out to you as we go through, so you're not getting a five hundred page document. We're going to give you a couple of funded pages every time before the meeting for the public. There are some one of the staff members can grab them off the table and put them great for me. Some of those things out, we're going to go through the main functions of the department, any mandates that we are experiencing right now. Some budget impacts that we're watching, how the budget fulfills our goals and as well as the council priorities. As you recall, last week, when Jeff and Cassandra and Carmen presented, they went through really the budget helps us enact the plans that council's been working on, our parks plan, our housing action plan, our transportation plan, our comp plan, all those different plans that we work on that are multi-year planning document. Budget helps fund the outcome of those. I will go over what are the significant ongoing items in each department, as well as any one-time expenses. And then if applicable, we'll talk about difficult choices that the mayor made, staffing changes or items for future consideration. As you're going to see throughout all of the presentations, there's going to be a handful of items that are definitely worthy that council needs to be considering for future budget discussions towards the end of the process. Is we are going to have a little bit of leftover revenue that, you know, you might want to throw at one of these projects to to keep it alive. So we'll be going through those, especially on Wednesday, you're going to see that or when we come down the streets and sidewalks to make sure that we maintain our level of service. So what are we now going to cover? You know, this, this is a very big budget. Like I said, it's about five hundred pages, about a hundred, over a hundred million dollars over the biennium when you look at all the funds. So that means that we can't get into every single line item detail. So what the the budget sheet in front of you, it rolls up all those line items into some different categories like salaries, benefits, supplies, services and charges, inter-bud transfers and authorized number of employees per that department. That being said, we are happy to sit down with any one of you for hours, if you even need to, because Cassandra loves this and go through every single line item in the budget. And we happy to to dive into the weeds if you so desire. So with that, before I get into departments, any questions from council about process? Okay, legislative, this is your department, right? This is for our council, not the mayor. The mayor's part of the executive budget. So I think you all know your job is to serve as the policymakers and set the direction of the city. And then the executive branch led by the mayor executes her policies. So what are some mandates that we are seeing? Definitely an increase to remove local decision-making from land use. And that's the state doing that. Some of that is offset by planning grants, but the ultimate implementation, it still rests on on the policymakers, which is you as 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 council. Also changes to the growth management act requiring housing and job growth by income bands. This is a new requirement from a couple of years ago. Once again, partially offset by state grants, but it does put a lot of pressure on the cities to make land use decisions and also potentially in the future, funding decisions on how you you know, obtain those affordable income bands. So what are the impacts? What what are we watching in as far as the budget goes from the legislative side? You know, structurally, it we are imbalanced. The one percent cap on city property tax leads to the fiscal cliff with basic inflation at four to ten percent. Doing more with less is not a long-term sustainable strategy. We've been doing more with less my entire twenty-seven year career in government. And it really got magnified when this one percent properly tax gap came in because while wages are growing at, you know, less than ten percent, definitely less than five percent a lot of times, it's our professional services and costs of doing projects and construction, which is going far greater than ten percent. So you end up with the structurally imbalanced system. Then I'd also say that the public shifting view of the city to a business. There's definitely an increased demand for service, which is creating some some stress in the system. You know, cities are being asked to provide more types of social services rather than the basic services of of streets and police. And it's balancing what can we afford with what is the public desire? Council priorities, each department will go through the specific council priorities of the budget. It's but because you're the policymakers and these are your priorities, your budget and your job affects all five of your council priorities. Notable expenses in your budget, the ongoing cost of A W C conference registrations. We budget to send two people to the A W C conference every single year. If you have not been to an A W C conference, I encourage you to attend. It's a good opportunity to go and do some learning as well as networking with your colleagues throughout the state. Also, out of legislative budget, we pay for our lobbying fees, so we do have a contract lobbyist. For the two-year biennium, it's a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, a hundred and eight thousand that comes out of our utility budget. So you're looking at roughly eighty thousand out of the general fund for two years. Yes.
Council member Ranky and I went to the finance convention. Where would that money come from?
It also comes in this, so there is some additional training money on top of that A W C conference in your budget.
Thank you.
Can you clarify the lobbyist? Is that like a one full-time person or is it just a contract with the consulting? How is that structured?
Sure, it is a contract that's a retainer amount per month, not, you know, divide that by twenty-four and you get the monthly amount.
Ask, is there a reason why it comes out of utility?
Absolutely. So one of the things that we look at is what is on our legislative agenda that you adopt every year? And if there are items that are specific to a utility, in this case, we're talking about our water rights and the foster pilot project. We are able to build some of our lobbyists' time to that utility rather than to the general fund. So our our lobbyist spends quite a bit of time actually working on the foster pilot project, which is our water rights pilot project that we're a part of. So that's why a lot of it comes out of water and then the storm portion is a lot to do with the White River Restoration Project that we're continuing to lobby for funds on. Moving on to executive, so executive is kind of a unit department. This is the mayor. This is me, it's Jeff and it's Carmen and and Joe McKinney, so it's our communications division, admin services director, myself and mayor. So what is our job? Our job is to make sure that the policies that council puts into place are effectuated. So we administer the programs and make sure that we inform the public of those. A lot of time is spent on coordinating the partnership with other governmental agencies and non-governmental organizations. And obviously monitoring the state and federal legislative activity. So not only monitor what's going on in Olympia, but we also monitor what's going on in Washington D.C. To see if there's any loving efforts that we can do throughout the legislative session. We also make sure that our staff is is watching their areas of responsibility. So if it's land use that Mr. Windish is paying attention to those, signing in and testifying as appropriate mayor or even council, if you'd like to testify in favor or against the bill, we make sure that that is able to happen. Some mandates, the biggest one that as a city we are facing that affects the executive department that also largely affects our information technology department is the ADA digital accessibility. So the federal government released some new ADA digital accessibility requirements for not only our website, but also third parties that integrate with our website. So think about our utility billing software, our permit software, your council packet software, that's a third party. All have to meet these new standards that are really going to be a challenge in some cases to make sure that we are meeting. And it's to help people with visual disabilities be able to interact with our website. It'll eventually even impact how we broadcast our council meetings and have to go to descriptive audio video for our council meetings or for presentations that we give. We're going to have to change the way that we put those presentations together to make sure that meets these new ADA criteria. Once again, federal government requirement, not funded. If we don't do it, we could be subject to E O C complaint and possible penalties. Things we're watching on the budget, all efficiencies that are easy have been reused. Any further efficiency that would be a significant cost savings is going to be a a change of service. Obviously, the shift in the economy and the fiscal cliff, they are forcing difficult decisions and a much tighter budget. And then, as I mentioned before, the same with the legislative department, the increasing public expectations related to service levels and balancing those against what we are able to provide. This is a slide that was not in the legislative section because it's specific to departments. And this is, you know, how do, what goals are we fulfilling? Focusing a lot on capital facilities and strategic tourism, because as you recall, the communications department is under the executive branch. We're busy writing grants to support those things. We're providing directional oversight and enhancing our partnerships to leverage any efficiencies that we can. The council priorities, this is, you'll start seeing this. So if you look at for executive, it's excellent government. And then if you recall, under your council priorities, you have excellent government. And then you have different bullet points on on what does that mean? And for the executive department, it really hits all five of those bullet points under excellent government, making sure that we're equitably distributing our resources. And by resources, that means our our financial resources and staff resources. Making sure that we are fiscally balanced, providing that desired mix of services, transparency and policy and actions, responding, engaging with the community and leveraging partnerships for enhanced services. Some ongoing expenditures in the executive department include the print newsletter. So we went down to quarterly for eight issues, that's about thirty-three thousand dollars for the biennium. The P C T V video production services, so this is we, we can buy additional time with P C T V to for to provide educational videos to the public. And they're very professional and we've done a number of them over the years. So that's a those have traditionally been built out to projects and now they're all just coming under the communications budget and fifty-two hundred dollars for the biennium. And then the R C C peg fee match. So we have to, in order to be a member of P C T V, we match the peg fees that they collect and then we remit those in quarterly, right? Quarterly.
And can you tell me what peg means?
Public, education, government.
Thank you, Jeff. Been a while since I've been on that committee. One thing that the communications division asked for was a summer intern for twenty-five and twenty-six. The purpose of the intern is to help with events and, you know, staffing these events and having like a city booth is something that is a really important part of our outreach, but it's difficult to find staff members to do this. So we've been paying non-exempt staff overtime to help cover those things. So we feel that having an intern to help us staff those events is money well spent. Additionally, the intern will help with other summertime communications related projects, help us boost social media and just help out. There's a lot of things that go on in the summer months, so it's nice to have an extra set of hands. Our plan would be to use the degrees of change seed internship program like we're doing with our public works interns. A lot of value for the money there and usually get students that are going away to a four-year school, but then are have some sort of geographical tie to Pierce County in the first place, so they're they're very vested in this area. Reverend Cassandra for finance.
Near and dear to my heart. So finance, we really coordinate the flow of money in and out of the city. And that takes place in a lot of different ways. Accurate accounting really uses the crux of what we do. We build trust with the public, with city council, with all of our stakeholders. They know how their money is being spent. We need that accounting, it was just the transparency. It frankly, it it benefits us when we're looking at bond ratings. It benefits us when we're looking at when we're going through our state audit with the auditor. Utility billing, we manage all of our utility billing, that's for water, sewer and stormwater. So that's issuing the bills as well as doing all of the collections and receiving. Accounts payable, we process all of our city payments to vendors and consultants. And then we work with the departments to ensure that not only do we have strong internal controls, but that we're also open and transparent with our vendors and with our staff. This is becoming more and more important as cybersecurity and cyber fraud is on the rise specifically with payments. So we spend a lot more time working on our internal controls to ensure that any payment that goes out of the city is valid and just and is for city services rendered.
So regarding the utility billing, I pay mine online, but I still get a bill. And is there any efficiency in, you know, not having those set out? Or is it just as cheap to have everybody get a bill as not?
I am going to pass the buck here and I'm going to say this is a software issue. Software company is aware of it. It is a known bug. We have the ability in resident access to elect for emails only, but it doesn't transfer back to the code in the software. And so what it does is it's still it's still producing that paper bill regardless of we opt out. What we would need to do when we process our bills, we send a flat file to a third party that does all the mailings for us. And we would need to literally manually go through and pull all the amount and it would just be it'd be more expensive to do that than just send them.
But I, your system is very good about notifying you that here's your bill. Like the first, it's going to be withdrawn from your account. So you have time and then you get a good receipt once that money is like the system, so I just, that's, but I had a feeling that was, we probably would have to manually do all the
It is a quirk. It is something that we constantly think, is this fixed yet?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Grant tracking, this is becoming more and more a significant portion of our daily work. Our public works department, our police department, our perks department, they all excel at getting grants with the help of our communications department. Every time we get a grant, there is a lot of work that goes into the administration of that grant. And it may be, and I will start even with the application, there's financial information regarded required to apply out through finance processes, the reimbursement request. And then we handle the single audit where the auditor is auditing our compliance with the specific requirements of of each of those grants. And then budget and forecasting, that's really the bulk of what I do, working on budget. Budget has kind of a finite period that we're taking action on it. I'm working on budget all year round and and so our department managers, our department heads are responsible for reviewing their budgets, asking questions. And really making sure that we know where the money is. So that is what we do. Some of the mandates that we have in finance, our annual audit, that's a big one. We have three annual audits, we have a financial in audit, a federal audit that is looking at our compliance with federal grants as well as our accountability audit. We are required by statute to be audited by the state auditor's office. We don't have an option on who audits us. And we are charged, the two thousand and twenty-five rate will be a hundred and thirty-nine dollars per hour for audit. We spend between forty and fifty thousand dollars annually on our audit. We try and make everything as audit-ready as possible before that audit begins so that we can really minimize the time with the auditor or spending chasing information. A utility shut-off specifically during heat advisories, this is new legislation that has occurred over the past couple of years. There is a broad statute that limits or even eliminates our ability to terminate service for non-payment for utilities whenever there is knowledge that a heat event may be announced. What this does, it severely limits really our ability to to do those utility shut-offs in the summer. Because there are requirements as far as timeliness, there are requirements as far as notice. And and again, it's a very broad definition of what constitutes that that heat emergency. And what the impact that has on staff, of course, is it's it's more collection activities. It's more trying to get those bills brought current, more working with the customers. And we're happy to work with the customers anytime. We want to be sure that everyone has as much opportunity as they can to make those payments. But there are times when it does get a little bit onerous, when we are not able to use the tools that we would normally have at our disposal. Some budget impacts that we're watching, something we've been talking with finance and personnel committee about on a monthly basis, is there a softening of sales tax and other revenues during due to inflationary pressures? We also talked about that last week with sales tax softening as well as our development service-related revenues. We also have increasing cost of financial software and electronic payment options. And this is something that you don't always think about, but the more and more we try and offer really good, convenient, efficient, transparent payment options to our community, the more cost and really impact it has on the backend. So for instance, right now, we have, I think we have six credit card processors. Each one of those is a separate batch that has to be reconciled and posted daily. We have retail lockbox, which does an electronic remittance of utility payments. You know, we're getting in a lot of A C H payments that have to be individually tracked, monitored and reconciled. It's all a good use of funds, but it does have an impact that that begins to really add up. Increasing cost of financial software, we use Tyler's E E R P, it's enterprise software. It does great, has a lot of advantages and efficiencies and benefits over our old software program, but they are looking at moving all self-hosted sites to a software as a service or a cloud solution. With that comes additional costs. They are, Tyler will be requiring us to use their Tyler payments processor instead of the processors we currently use, again, at an increased cost. And so we're always looking at ways that we can be more efficient with our software, but also knowing that we don't have a lot of a lot of other options in that venue. Increasing regulatory framework on grant management, I could spend hours on that. Our staff is great at getting grants. There is no such thing as free money. So the, there are two of us in finance, along with staff in the departments that work very hard at making sure that our use of grants is transparent, is easily accountable and that the granting agencies continue to have faith in us. They want to know where their money is being spent. It's their right to know that and that's how we continue to be successful in in grants. And then changing accounting and auditing requirements from the state and federal agencies. We report on a cash basis that is a basis of accounting prescribed by the state auditor's office. There's an annual bars update, there's always something that's changing. Sometimes it's a simple change, sometimes that requires some changes in our financial software. And then, of course, best practices with G A S B is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board that are routinely coming down with new pronouncements, whether it be on changes in pension accounting, changes in lease accounting. You know, for instance, we have new pronouncements that we had, we now disclose the dollar value of the obligation of all leases for the life of the lease. We do the same thing for software as a service contracts. So those are all great as far as transparency and accountability, but they do have a work impact. Fulfilling goals, capital facilities and transportation plan initially comes down to our work with the departments with grants as well as our transparent utility billing that supports the revenue requirements for our utility funds. Our council priorities, we really do fall under the excellent government and that's our equitable distribution of resources. The big one for us is long-range financial stability as well as a fiscally balanced mix of desired services. And that transparency and policy and actions, that's a big one for me. Numbers are numbers, you know, I'm I'm happy to share numbers whenever they are and I enjoy talking about it. Some notable items in the finance department budget, state auditor, again, a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars with our new rates. And you'll see the Tyler pace program, it's thirty-one thousand dollars over the biennium. Tyler pace program is a discounted block of training sessions or implementation days that we buy upfront for our software. And then we can use them and schedule them on a variety of different things. For instance, we've got half of a pay day coming up on Thursday for our payroll analyst to kind of refine our D R S retirement reporting. We've got a pay day coming up, we have two new employee, relatively new employees. So we've got a pay day coming up to use just as a utility billing, you know, one-on-one. Because as we try and introduce that cross-training, we can use those pay stays for that. And then C P P C E training, I apologize for the acronyms. That is our certified payroll professional. Every five years, she is required to obtain a certain number of continuing educate education of C E credits to maintain her her certification. It's a pricey training to really maximize getting those credits. And so what we've done is she was very thoughtful and worked out a schedule where she attends a payroll congress virtually for two years. And every third year she attends in person. We thought that was a great compromise for her to really maximize getting those C E credits so that she can maintain her certification. And so two thousand and twenty-five is the year that she would be attending the in-person congress. And then on the one-time revenues, we have a fleet replacement reserve study. We're anticipating that will be about thirty thousand dollars. And that is working with a consultant to update our rate model for our fleet replacement. So that is looking at all of our rolling stock, useful lives, salvage values, the user and waiting out to be sure that we're accruing the the accruing a sufficient amount for replacement when that when that equipment is ready to be replaced. One more, one more slide. For personal changes, we're asking to continue with our finance specialist. This is a position that council approved over hiring this year in two thousand and twenty-four. We have a retirement in finance coming up at the end of March two thousand and twenty-five. And so we've hired this finance specialist who is working on And so we've hired this finance specialist who is working on, uh, we've got her loaded with a lot of projects. We're also working on cross-training, so what we're asking to do is continue that that position through the biennium. As with any retirement, you know, after after retirement, we take a look at the department and evaluate and we see what the best mix of. Um, responsibilities is, but right now, what we're asking to do is to continue it, continue that position through the biennium.
To just add that, on the finance specialist position, the other justification is the sheer amount of grants we've been getting lately. It's putting a lot of extra strain on finance department, as well as the new pre-treatment program mandate that is. Coming down, as you know, we're being delegated as a pre-treatment agency, uh, that is going to have an impact on finance and and billing. So, we're trying to hedge and get ready for that. Also, um, just a reminder that while you see those numbers up there, those are not all general fund dollars. It is allocated back out through our uh indirect cost allocation for links. So, some of this will be definitely offset by utilities.
Do you have a round figure about how much grants you bring, you know, the city brings in? Annually or over the next two years?
Can I punt that question to Wednesday, because we're gonna spend a lot of time talking about all the grants that we've been getting lately?
Of course.
And part of the complexity, especially when we're looking at. Two biggest projects that we have coming up, of course, the White River Restoration, including Stewart Road Bridge. When we're looking at these, really, these are legacy projects, these are things that are.
What was the second project?
Stewart Road Bridge, so when we're looking at these kind of legacy projects, um. We've been, it's it's so exciting to see these projects and to see the extent to which they have buy-in from department heads. And so these projects are so heavily funded, but that's also, you know, it's it's complex when we've got four or five different funding partners. On one project, and really what we're trying to do is maximize. Each dollar, making sure that, you know, we've got this is being a match for this, is being a match for this. But we have to do this first because this grant has a time limit, and this one is only for. Engineer or only for design, but this one's for construction, it's it's a lot that goes into trying to balance, making sure that we're um. I understand you, I don't want to leave a dollar on the table.
As a preview, I can tell you that it's in the tens of millions in the next biennium.
The city is very successful. Get that out there.
And I just have one comment because I'm very familiar with grant administration. One of the questions I had before this that I did not ask was, how do you do all of this work? I know what it takes, I supervise two teams that did that, so I know what it takes, and I think that's well needed.
You have a very good team. Superwoman. Anybody else?
All right, moving on to the legal department, um, so they have, this is an interesting department, it's not only our city attorney. There's also uh the city clerk, a uh record specialist, a victim advocate. Um, contract prosecutors and attorneys, so quite a wide array of people. So, obviously, it's a legal department, they provide legal counsel, so they provide legal advice on all matters related to city business. Uh, they also represent the city in lawsuits or other civil matters. Legal department's also responsible for the public records, uh, responding to public records requests. Uh, as well as developing policy and process to make sure that we meet. Uh, the the records request laws as well as the retention laws. As I mentioned, uh, we also do criminal prosecution prosecution uh for misdemeanor crimes that happened in the city of Sumner as well as. Uh, traffic infractions, um, we employ a. And a staff member that is a legal assistant, but also provides victim assistance to method violence victims. So she spends a lot of time coordinating with them, helping them get assistance. Uh, making sure that they're aware where the 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 case is in the in the criminal trial, in the criminal trial process. Spend a lot of time communicating with them and walking them through that process. And then the city clerk is also in the legal department, so, so you know that Michelle clerks all of our meetings. Responsible for coordinating all of the council packets, public notices, other related council business. Mandates, um, first off, I want to say, you know, when we talk about mandates, I should have said this at the beginning, not all mandates are bad, right? There's a lot of good mandates, so please be aware that when we're talking about mandates, it's also just to make you aware of things that. We can't cut from the budget, we have to do these types of things, and there's some good mandates here uh that are good examples of that. Maybe not the first one, the first one is out noted. Right now, whenever we do a legal notice, we have to post it in a newspaper of record. Our newspaper of record is the Enam Clock Courier Herald. That's our newspaper of records. Why we chose Enam Clock Courier Herald is because all of their legal notices are available online and not behind a paywall. Um, when we've had a lot of struggles with other newspapers in the region, trying to find where our legal notices are actually showing up. Uh, and then we also had some billing issues, so we've chosen to go that way. Why the state still requires this when not a lot of people are looking for legal notices in a newspaper nowadays? I'm not sure, so obviously, we meet that legal mandate that's required by state law, it's not funded. But we do a lot more other ways of providing those legal notices, our website, E-News, et cetera. Uh, a good example, one that is not necessarily a a negative mandate, but it is an impact, is the public records response. Uh, we're seeing, you know, we obviously have a very tight timeline to do an initial response. Uh, and communicate with the requester, but what we're seeing is a lot more folder drop requests. Uh, as well as additional requests for video type um records. And those all take considerably more staff time to process, and those over broader quests. It could be, I want to see all of the emails between the state and the state. Then we have to go through every single email, make sure there's nothing in this could be, that's exempt from public disclosure. And uh, and then release those installments. Now, when I say it's not funded, it isn't funded. Do we charge fees to requesters? Yes, we do, but we don't make up. Anywhere near the staff time that we put into responding to those requests. Um, and then this is another, not a bad mandate, it's actually a good mandate that I think came from the pandemic. And that's that council meetings must be available by a streaming service. So pre-pandemic, you can remember, the only way that the public could attend a council meeting was in person. And regular council meetings were available on PCTV, you know, that peg channel. Uh, that you could go and watch, I think, channel twenty-two, go watch the council meetings if if you're up late at night. Uh, but now people can join our meetings virtually all the time. Um, and we stream our study sessions, which we were never doing, or never able to do prior to the pandemic. So, while that's required by the state, it isn't funded, and there is an ongoing cost with that. So the budget impacts legal department, uh, you know, uh, similar to other departments, the constantly shifting state and federal laws. Uh, requires legal to spend considerable time reading case law, figuring out, maybe best. Education to give to our staff, make sure that we're in compliance and we don't cause unnecessary risk or liability to the city. And then, as I mentioned before, the increasing costs associated with fulfilling body warrant camera and complex record requests. We have a team that works on public records requests, you know, uh, well, Michelle is the leader of that team. Uh, as the city clerk, she relies heavily on members of the police department record staff, as well as our upstairs record specialist to help fulfill those. And then has to coordinate, uh, searching for responsive records with all of the different departments that may have responsive records. So, uh, fulfilling goals of the council, uh, legal spends a lot of time on capital improvement projects. As well as our needed valued services of such as public safety. Um, they review and negotiate all contracts and property acquisition. Uh, for transportation, environmental and parks projects, so pretty much any piece of property, well, any piece of private city buys legal is involved in that. Um, and then also ensuring on the on the public safety front, making sure that, you know, we have very consistent prosecution. Uh, that, you know, that's a philosophy in of itself, you know, what do we prosecute for, what do we make a deal on? What do we, how do we evaluate cases for their merit and also, you know, prior criminal uh activity or history of the of the defendant? Uh, making sure that we protect the public, uh, when when all possible. So the council priorities, legal department, uh, mobiles, public safety. Progressive collaborative and systemic social service solutions. Jeff will touch on municipal court here in a minute, but obviously, uh, the prosecutor is a key aspect of therapeutic or community court. Um, legal department is always making sure that we provide excellent transparency in our policy and actions, as well as the equitable distribution of resources. Some ongoing uh expenses on legal department, uh, first off, indigent defense services, so this is a the public defender. So if you weren't aware, the city is required to pay for public defense services. Uh, for anybody that is seen in Sunday Municipal Court. You might be wondering, why is this in the legal budget when it's really associated with the court? Well, that's a Cassandra question in the VAR's manual, it it's just that, it's an accounting way that, you know, they say it needs to be done. Jeff will get into some additional challenges that we're seeing with indigent defense when he talks about municipal court here in just a minute, because that that is something that's on the horizon. Uh, other ongoing, uh, the contract for prosecution services, so we contract with a a private attorney to. Be our our city prosecutor, so he shows up, he reviews all of our cases, makes charging decisions, and then represents us in municipal court. There is some one-time expenses in the legal budget, uh, including five G implementation legal services. Uh, we know that as five G service comes to cities, we're going to have to continually evaluate. How those are zoned and how they are implemented, that's something that we've been working on for a number of years. Um, and I think that technology is changing so rapidly, I think probably a lot of people have five G on their phone right now. But it doesn't have the, you know, the towers every hundred feet like they originally thinking it was going to be, so. It'll be interesting to see how that technology changes how we uh implement five G in the future. Uh, we have environmental legal services, we have a a contract that's being carried over from this year for environmental legal services for a cleanup. Uh, project that we're involved in, and then golf course legal services, this is also a carryover as we. Finalize all the transition of selling the golf course and into the White River project. Andrea has requested to carry over Don Marcy's contract of thirty-two thousand. Now, these, I want to make sure you understand, these one-time expenses are are paid for only if we use those services, so. If we don't use any of Don Marcy's services, for example, we wouldn't spend any of this thirty-two thousand. Uh, one change that the mayor made to the budget, um, Andrea had asked for fifty thousand dollars for external legal services. This is to handle things that pop up, um, because they do, that's just the nature of the business that we're in. And uh, the mayor reduced that to ten thousand, knowing that. If there is something that rises to the level, we can come down with counsel and discuss it with you and come up with a plan of the best way to address it. Which would be a budget amendment if necessary, but ten thousand would be enough to get her started, uh, if we need something immediately. Any questions about legal?
Is that a quick one on the one-time services you just talked about with golf course and all?
Yeah.
Um, it's a biennial budget or sort of both years, is that amount or is that?
Amount for both years.
Okay, so that's not just twenty-five, but twenty-five.
Okay, I will begin with our municipal court departments. Um, so as you are all aware, uh, municipal court has done partnerships with the city of Bonnie Lake. Um, they provide services via via a interlocal contract with the city. We provide a judge, we provide a prosecutor, which comes out of Andrea's legal department. And a public defender, which actually kind of stands alone in his own apartment, by himself. He's not part of the court, he's not part of legal, he's on his own. Um, but Bonnie Lake provides court building and all the the court courts. Uh, they adjudicate cases, uh, limited jurisdiction, it serves those that are charged with misdemeanors, civil infractions. On the other part, popular parking violations. They also run a community court, um, it's an an option for specific cases to help defendants improve their lives. That are dealing with substance abuse problems. No, I went too far. Uh, so some mandates that we're we're looking at, um, there's some proposed changes to the indigent defense standards. Um, I think we all can agree that it is important to have people get good public defense representation. Um, so that the state has is uh weighing options to lower down their number of cases that they're able to have in a year. Which is great, but what that means is courts like us might have to have multiple public defenders. And it's not real easy to find people that are practicing this subsection of the law, there's just not many of them out there. We also have changes to drug laws that impact our municipal courts. Drugs were illegal, drugs were legal again, now they're illegal. And it's changed, the laws have changed, and a lot of things that previously would not have gone in our court are now coming down to our municipal court. So it really is changing um our case counts and amount of time that we're spending for dealing with these types of. Um, some of the budget impacts, uh, like I mentioned, uh, therapeutic court funding, uh, we have our second year of court funding. Uh, it goes through June of next year because it's on the state's fiscal year. But um, in year two, we didn't get as much as we asked for. Now, I think that our court is able to make some adjustments and fit within the the budget budget grant that they got or the allotment from the state. But there's no guarantee that that's going to continue, and as more and more people have community courts. Either those that are doing them are going to get less, or the state's going to have to come up with more money, and I think we can probably guess how that's going to end up. And then as mentioned before, some proposed changes to indigent defense standards. As far as fulfilling goals, uh, needed to value services, so this is really basic public safety helps fulfill all goals and plans. Um, program overview, so ongoing, as I mentioned, we have our our court contract with the city of Bonnie Lake, five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, we pay banking fees as people pay for their court fines with credit cards, there is an offset, there's a banking fee that we have to pay for that. We also pay interpreter services, and then uh, the one time is the community court therapeutic grant. Uh, council priorities, uh, obviously heavy on the public safety side. Um, and really collaboration, it's collaboration between us and the city of Bonnie Lake. And then excellent government ledger leveraging partnerships. Um, having court up at Bonnie Lake versus having it here is still a cost savings for the city of Sumner. Any questions on court?
So I'm just looking at the budget overview, and the twenty twenty-four revised budget is five hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. And then the proposed for twenty-five is four hundred and ninety-eight thousand eight hundred nine. And twenty-six is four twenty-three six, so I'm just wondering why it was going down. And what is, was there like a one-time?
So that's reflecting that the the therapeutic court is only funded through June of two thousand and twenty-five. So if legislature funds it again for the next state biennium, we'll come back to council with a budget amendment to accept that funding. To handle um the remaining part of the twenty-five, twenty-six biennium.
Okay, all right, good.
We've got six months into the the twenty-four month biennium that's funded, but beyond that is.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, for those of us who are a little ignorant, can you just give a really like one minute, what is therapeutic court?
Want me to do it?
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
So therapeutic court is, so I'm just giving an example, you have a a a subject that is charged with a theft, let's say, and say they were shoplifting. And the the prosecutor and the public defender can review that case and say, you know what? This person, you know, based on their criminal history and talking to them, this might be uh caused. Their theft problem might be caused by either substance abuse or mental health issues. So what they do is they put them into what they call community court. And it 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 takes them out of the mainstream court, and it's a more informal process that helps people connect with resources. To get either substance abuse treatment, mental health treatment, maybe housing assistance, kind of get their life back together. With the goal of reducing recidivism, so that they won't go out and commit another theft right away. Whereas traditional court, right, they're gonna process the case, maybe do an SOC, they're gonna, you know, maybe take a trial, they're gonna get sentenced.
Doesn't solve.
Doesn't solve their life problem, exactly. That's the idea behind community court.
But it's, yeah, and it's it's held completely differently than regular court, it it functions. It's much more hands-on, touchy-feely, we have um, you know, mental health providers, we have we have uh counselors. It's it's very different.
Legislative funding funds a hundred percent of the um direct costs of community court. So what it doesn't fund is really our staff time in administering the program, but it funds the. So what it doesn't fund is really our staff time in administering the program, but it funds the. The coordinator, the mental health counselors, the in in operating costs.
And this was a mandate at some point? Is it pretty new?
This is, well, therapeutic courts have been around a long time. I mean, city of Seattle has operated a therapeutic court for at least a decade, probably a lot longer than that. This was in response to the Blake decision. So when they re-criminalized drugs. Not only, as Jeff mentioned, they took what used to be a felony in a lot of cases, some of those possession level felonies are now misdemeanors. So they have now they're in our court and one of the 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 goals of the Blake fix is to. Reduce your this recidivism and connect people with. Treatment. So this is how one of the methods.
Not a mandate that the state has provided the funding that that we have gone after.
That's a that's a good distinction. Our court chose to apply to have a therapeutic community court. Right? We not all courts have done that. Because as Cassandra mentioned, while there is grant funds to cover a lot of it, that the long-term funding is uncertain. And unknown. And also there is a lot of other associated costs that come that are not covered by the grant that that we are absorbing.
I just wanted to make a comment that we're al- always invited to go to the graduation. Yep, when the. Client finishes their program. And then I believe, you know, they also speak to the audience and tell about the impact. So it's definitely is a very worthwhile program.
Funny to see so many graduate from that.
I got a quick question. On the uh, I'm just looking at the chart, the authorized F T E, is that a city of Sumner employee or is that Bonnie Lake employee? Or is that, do we have on?
The judge.
Oh, the judge.
The judge is our is our one city employee. Everything else.
Everything else is Bonnie Lake.
Bonnie Lake. Aside from. They're all Bonnie Lake. Bonnie Lake are contracted. Okay, uh next one to human resources and risk management. Uh so the main functions of the H R and risk management departments. Uh obviously to uh recruiting and hiring. Um so H R is integral in recruiting and hiring employees, um posting jobs, setting up interviews. Um ensuring that the process is equitable and transparent for all applicants. Um H R spends a lot of time supporting employees, so that's understanding policies, giving accesses to resources such as family medical leave, help explaining benefits. Um and then labor relations. Uh we have four labor contracts through three labor unions that we work with. Um typically, a labor contract spans three years, so we're regularly reviewing those, updating them, and negotiating. And so some of the mandates that we're looking at, uh we've recently had some changes to minimum wage, uh state minimum wage. In Washington is is fairly high, so we've got to keep competitive rates, especially with some of our more entry-level positions. Thinking like summer seasonals and interns like that, we've had to increase the cost uh as well as some of our animal control positions uh to be competitive. With what fast food places are tracking a higher minimum wage in the state. Uh we also have a paid family medical leave, which was a new uh benefit. Enacted by the state a few years ago that we have to deal with. And there's continuing law changes, you know, around employment law. Even even an existing law will just get interpreted differently and it will affect us uh on as far as how we do pretty much all the policies and everything that we do. Uh budget impacts. So as we mentioned before, um you know, we're still having relatively low unemployment and high inflation makes um a pretty difficult job market. And we have a lot of pending retirements uh in this upcoming budget that we're dealing with, um specifically. Uh in twenty five, a lot of key positions are folks that are looking to retire. So we have a knowledge gap. We have to go out. We have to recruit those people. We have to train the new employees. So we'll be working on that as well. Um fulfilling goals, uh needed and valued services. Um so there's nothing in H R that's that's fully automated. I always I always joke, oh, that's that's an automatic fix. It's not. Um so there's lots of things that we have to manually touch. Any goal needs to be qualified and competent staff to achieve success. Uh as far as council priorities, uh really focusing once again on equal excellent government, excuse me. Um the big one at the top there is recruiting and retaining quality diverse staff. We can't do the things that we do unless we have good staff. And H R is a big part of that. Getting them in the door, keeping them happy. Uh so we have a lot of uh ongoing services. Uh once again, the H R department is just one single employee, uh H R manager that manages a hundred and thirty five. Regular employees. Um so uh we do have a lot of kind of um services that we hire out. So we have recruitment and hiring services. That's uh things as testing, subscription services, advertising, doing background checks. Uh we also have some citywide training um for kind of H R policy and law-related stuff that's run through the H R department. On the risk side, uh we have um. Risk services of six, sixty one thousand dollars. Uh that's for things like hearing tests. Um the F M C S A clearinghouse is for our C D L uh drivers. We have to run them through the clearinghouse to make sure that their licenses. Are in effect and things like medical exam fees, once again, for C D L drivers. Any sort of those kind of ongoing medical tests for tests for current employees. End up in the H R department. Uh we also have an employee wellness program. Uh this nine thousand dollars allows us to get two percent off of our medical bill. Um it does things like sponsors potlucks. Um so it's it's really a good, nice thing for employees and it's a good savings. Yeah. And we also have a a one-time, one-time ask, and that's for labor negotiation support. Uh typically, we do all of our labor negotiations in-house, um except for when we negotiate with the police union. Um with that, we have in the past brought in an outside attorney to help us. Um in twenty twenty six, we'll be negotiating that contract and that's where this ask. Uh the next department is the diversity, equity, inclusion.
I have one quick question. Um so I was curious about, you you mentioned that there were going to be a number of retirements in twenty twenty five. So with that comes like vacation payouts, it also comes with like what we call double pocketing, like double staff in one position. And you're counting for all of that um within the budget?
We have attempted as much as possible. Uh we have reached out to our employees that we know are. Are retired eligible and said, not included anything, but we can think you might be retiring. Then with that, we've gone and estimated, you know, how much leave do they currently have? How much do we think that they're going to have when they might want to retire? How much are they going to earn? Um looking at various positions and we've costed out some of those things. Um we talked about different methodologies on how to include that or not include it in the budget. And we're hoping. We've got it all in there and we can kind of. We can kind of figure it out. Um but yeah, that does often. Mean sometimes a position's vacant for a while, or sometimes we have to have two people at the same time because the one's training the other.
I think the over-hire is the thing that uh we're least comfortable is in the budget because you don't really know until you get closer. Well, is it going to be a month? Is it going to be two months? Um and then retirement dates. Change. You know, they move up, they move out. You but you know, once you make that decision, it's not uncommon to say, okay, well, thank you one month earlier. You know, usually doesn't go out.
Yeah, she was like, at any time, my retirement date is any time. Well, that makes easy.
Hey, thank you.
So uh on, yeah, any other H R questions? Sorry, H R risk. Uh so next, uh D E I B. Um so uh the city has a a D E I B committee and we have a a department that's. Kind of formulated around that committee. Uh really what it does is it provides training and events. Uh as you know, everyone has bias. Formal training and fun events can help employees kind of gain different perspectives and build understanding across various experiences. Um you have staff that provide inputs to ensure the city builds trust with the public across different demographics. And uh Sumner staff and public are diversifying rapidly. As you know. Our community is changing and this fun um and its staff committee helps seek ways to build respect and inclusion throughout the city. So as far as budget impacts, uh we have planned a citywide D P I B training in twenty twenty five. We last did that in twenty twenty three? Two, twenty-two. I was gonna guess two, I think twenty-two.
The council did.
Council was included, yeah. Um so we'll be we'll be taking that up again in twenty twenty-five. We have. Gone out for a request for proposals and we've selected a vendor, but with all that's going on, including budget. It's not possible to get it done here in twenty twenty-four, so we're gonna push it off to the beginning of twenty twenty-five. And really the idea is, you know, like it says, fostering a safe and supportive work culture assists with employer retention improvement. Pretty obvious. Uh fulfilling goals. Once again, uh needed and valued services and educated and diverse workforce assist the staff and policy. Review recommendations that support the varying needs of our community. It's very important to have diverse voices. Yes.
When did they add belonging into the sequence?
Recently, this year.
What does that mean? Is it much different than the other three? You know?
Well, I can think about belonging more like culture, right? You feel welcome here, right? So regardless of. Any, you know, race, religion, sexual orientation, whatever. So do you feel welcome? And it's really creating that positive culture among employees. Um that's that's how the committee has embraced that word.
So council priorities, um it's obviously the character, character of the community and excellent governments. So as I mentioned before, um the facilitated D E I B training for s- all staff. Budgeted at sixty five thousand dollars. Any questions? My next one is not.
Yeah, there's no slide on the mandate thing. Is this is this something that wasn't in place in twenty twenty-one?
This is not a, this is not a mandate. This is something that um. Staff, council, and the mayor felt was important, so it's it's either we voluntarily undertake. Emergency management. Um so the city uh had previously housed emergency management under the police department. Kind of as ancillary duty for the deputy chief and risk management was in the H R department, like something that Adrian would kind of fill in when she had time. In the last budget, we created um emergency management and. Safety coordinator, which is Evan. He works upstairs kind of outside of of Jason's office. Um. So this is kind of his other part of his budget. Um so really with emergency management, it's uh working in partnership. Uh the city has uh emergency management coordination with regional governments, um Epic, which is the East Pierce Interlocal Coalition. School district, uh the county. We're also working with non-governmental organizations, obviously, like the Red Cross, churches, and Y M C A for emergency management. Um Evan also takes a big role in in training, uh so we have a comprehensive emergency management plan that we have to train. Uh both internally and externally with our our partners. And then also looking at employee safety. So uh dealing with workplace injuries. Safety and and training with that, you know, things like forklift training, C P R training, first aid training, first aid audits. All happens in in this department as well.
He's Cassandra in the emergency section.
Less spreadsheets, but yes.
I think his book is bigger.
Just as many acronyms, it's fine. Um so so mandates, um we're required to adopt a comprehensive emergency management plan. And and if we don't, I guess maybe we're not required, but if we don't, we'll be ineligible for grants. So which really means we are required. Um we also have to do ongoing training and exercises of the various elements in that plan. Uh so one of the things that we're looking at is we have this, um we're looking at evaluating community alert technology, uh whether that's um. Code red or P C alert and different ways to notify our employees and our community in case of an emergency. And I'm really making sure anybody that's that's on staff that's responsible for, you know, operating in the emergency operations center that we're we're trained. And we're we're ready to act if hopefully, you know, if necessary, hopefully we don't have to. Uh fulfilling goals. Once again, um adequate planning and training for a wide variety of natural and man-made disasters. It's gonna be anything from flooding, harsh earthquakes, train derailments, cyber incidents. All sorts of things that would require us to have to respond. Um council party, so this uh falls under public safety, emergencies preparedness, um excellent government, uh being responsive, engaged with the community. And once again, leveraging partnerships for enhanced services. This is not something that Sumner could do on its own. We have to work with our partners and our neighbors. Um as far as ongoing costs, we have the interlocal agreement for the Epic, which is thirty thousand dollars. Difficult choices. Uh so I I asked for and and it's been approved, a vehicle for Evan. When we hired Evan, he was a new physician and we didn't have a vehicle for him, so we gave him an old cop car. We stripped the cop decals off the side and put a regular Sumner logo on it, but it still looks and runs like an old cop car. Um it should have been replaced long ago, which is why they were why they were willing to give it up to him. So really, we need to get him a a more permanent vehicle. So that's what this forty five thousand dollar asks.
Although an emergency guy should be in a police car, you would think.
Took the lights off too, so it doesn't doesn't have any of the fun stuff. Uh any questions on emergency management?
Questions still?
Where's that forty five thousand for the vehicle? Is it not in the?
Uh so it'll be budgeted in as a a transfer out of the emergency management fund. And it would go into the vehicle replacement. Fund, which we'll uh discuss next week.
Interfund.
And and then that's where the purchase will actually.
Has it been ordered?
What?
Has it been ordered?
It has not. I'm hoping because we're just, you know, a regular old. Car, sedan, S U V. It shouldn't be as bad as some of the more specialized.
Okay, moving on to development services. Certainly you want to say about development services being. On a quarter friendly, sorry, uh to be on the spot, you can come back. Alright, so main function of development services, this is our permit counter. So they handle all permits. Uh that come into the city. So there they do the delicate job of balancing what the applicant desires to do. With the enforcement of our city zoning codes, comprehensive plan, and infrastructure. Um that's always a a difficult balance, but their mission is to get everybody to yes and help them problem solve and and get a permit issued. Uh also in development services, we have a building official who obviously plays a part in. Uh the permit review, but he is also responsible for um inspecting any sort of improvements that happen to existing buildings. Or uh any building that may fall into disrepair in the city. Um that takes a a lot of time and make sure that, you know, he's properly inspecting to follow the state building code and A D A rules. Uh to make sure that the occupants of those buildings are safe. Also in development services is our code compliance officer. Uh so they deal with any sort of non-nuance type complaint. Nuisance complaints are handled by our community service officer in the police department. But any sort of land use, building uh zoning code issues, uh illicit discharge. A whole wide range of different uh codes our compliance officer handles. With always the goal of getting people into compliance before we start issuing fines or or taking them to court. And uh I'll say, she's done a a great job of getting people into compliance, so we don't have to uh go down the costly. You know, court enforcement process. Some upcoming mandates, um first off, starting at the beginning of the year, we're gonna have some required permit approval timelines. So when a permit is deemed that we have it complete and comes across our counter, we're gonna have. Uh a set timeframe, depending on if it's a residential or a commercial permit, to get that permit out the door and issued. Uh so that puts a lot of pressure on our our department coming up. You're going to see some code changes coming to council in the next few months to incorporate these changes. Um we also have the building and energy code changes, so those just went into place uh in July, I believe, of this year, and that changes how. The building code is interpreted for commercial buildings within the city. That does affect the city as well. We're gonna have to do an energy audit on our building. We'll have to make sure that other buildings are doing an energy audit that are over twenty thousand square feet. And that's something that we're continuing to learn about, but it's on the horizon during this next biennium of how we uh go through that process. Uh budget impacts to that to development services, uh implementing that pre-treatment program, that's gonna require a permit. So anybody that's a non-domestic contributor to our sewer system is going to have to be reviewed. So that's everything from a cell phone store all the way up to a food. So that's everything from a cellphone store all the way up to a food manufacturing that might be a significant industrial user. Uh, they're going to have to be reviewed, not only what is new to our city, but what is existing in our city. And that'll uh be going through the development services process uh to coordinate that review. We've learned that our building fee structure is a little outdated, so um that is probably yeah contributing to our building fee revenues that we're collecting. And then, as I mentioned, the required permit approval timelines. So what goals do they help us fulfill? The transportation plan, our utility plans? So as a reminder, we have utility plans for all of our major utilities that talk about making sure we have enough water, for example. That we have the sewer infrastructure in place, so they make sure that any development activity meets those plans and our comprehensive plan. Um, excellent government, as we've mentioned several times tonight, but also uh protection of natural resources, so they want to make sure that you know, we're hooking up, uh new development or tenant improvements are hooking into our water system correctly, so they don't accidentally, you know, cause a, a backflow into our drinking water system. Um, and then effectively managing our stormwater. A lot of our development projects down here on the valley floor, we need to deal with stormwater effectively. So whether that's uh routing into a, a redesigned storm system, or if it's uh creating a new storm system onsite. Some of their ongoing uh costs, uh they do have a consultant uh on standby for plan review. Um, this is to help us make sure that we are meeting those development permit timelines. If they also help us um deal with bigger cases, we've used them when the, the high school built last time, we used outside uh land use plan reviewers. Uh, just so we could keep the school district moving on time. We've also done that with some of our other big projects, because this is a rather small department. We had two, two planners, uh they're doing land use. We have one engineer that's doing uh everything that's on the civil side, and then you have your building official that's also doing fire review. So very small group of employees uh to manage the permit volume. Uh, we're gonna be switching to a structural consultant, so right now, we, um, as you know, we contract with Sound inspection services, which then subs out fire reviews and structural. Fire review, we're gonna be able to pull back in-house, because our employees getting uh their certifications later this year. But structural, we still don't have anybody on staff that can do structural reviews, so we'll be contracting those out on an hourly basis uh as needed. And once you get development fees, pay for a lot of these, um, they offset these expenses. We do still need to have a building inspector on backup on, because you know, if our building inspector is on leave. Uh, we need to have somebody that can continue to review plans for us. Um, also, if we have any staff or elected leaders that apply for a permit, we always contract all of those out, so you know, have that degree of separation from the city. And then our hearing examiner for any sort of land use appeal uh comes out of, out of development services, and that's about twenty thousand dollars for the biennium. Uh, they are asking for a one-time uh building fee study, so they've uh done an R F P for this already, identified a, a firm that can evaluate all of our building fees and make some recommendations. Uh, to get us more in line with the region on our building fees. Any questions on development services?
What happened in twenty twenty three? I'm looking at the cost, it was like a fifty percent increase in the budget. From twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, it went from like a million dollars, like the payroll doubled. Did you guys hire people, reorganize? What happened there?
I will go back and assess that out for you. Happy to.
You got, um, one thing that might be, there's two things that come to mind, and we'll, we'll get to the, the, the bottom line, but uh prior to last budget, we all permits were handled under a different type of county, and now we moved them all into their own department. So that's one thing, and then also our inspection services, you know, have to pay a lot to our contract employee. Uh, and firm to do a lot of inspection services. Sure. That'll help explain it.
Yeah, can you go back a slide? So that building fee study, the eighty five thousand dollars, one of the things that I'll be looking at in concert with this is so right now, development services, both the revenues and the expenditures are accounted for in the general fund. Um, one of the things that, that I'm looking at is would this be best set up as an enterprise fund? So an enterprise fund is defined as activities or a function that is supported by user fees. And the user fees wholly support that function. As part of that building fee study, do we set up development services as its own enterprise fund? To really ensure that we're able to capture the cost of providing those development services through our fee structure, so you may see some additional conversation coming, you know, kind of down the, down the line on how we account for debt services. Whether or not we keep it in the general fund, or whether or not we reclassify it as an enterprise fund with the intent that the building rates are set to cover the cost of services.
Yeah, questions on development services? Alright, law enforcement. Okay, uh, what does our police department do? Uh, respond to crime, pretty basic, right? Um, I think we are still very unique in that while we have online reporting, we still use the motto, no, no call too small, so uh we do respond to any call for service that our community wishes to make, and we try to do so in a timely manner. Uh, the other thing that the police department does that probably doesn't get enough credit is the amount of reports and tracking that goes into it, because a lot of technical work that happens by our civilian staff, uh, well, first our officers to write those reports, and then our civilian staff to document and track all that data. Uh, help victims get the follow-up they need, and then uh meet the state requirements for public records. We get a lot of records requests to our police department for, for case reports. Um, investigate, so we want to make sure that our officers are, have the proper training to equip them and empower them to do thorough investigations. Um, good investigations lead to, to just outcomes and accountability. Uh, we've done a lot of expansion to our abilities, or capabilities, rather, to process digital evidence, and when I talk about digital evidence, I'm talking mostly cell phones. Well, you know, there's a lot of digital evidence that are out there on social media or on a cellphone that uh we've received. We've, we've upgraded our technology to be able to handle that, and then receive the training to start processing that in-house. Um, most felony crimes have some sort of digital evidence nexus to them, and uh it's, it's a, it's a big demand uh on our detectives. Partnerships, um, you know, we want to maintain our cooperative specialty teams, so this includes like our SWAT team, our crime response unit, our major collision response team. They really serve as a force multiplier. We cannot do our job without collaborating and partnering with our neighboring jurisdictions to, to investigate crimes that happen in our community. And then community policing, you know, we need to maintain and enhance our public trust with our police crime defense. Uh, the core tenet of community policing and, and our police department, I think they do a great job with that. And really um helping the, to reduce the fear of crime and the incidence of crime. So as far as mandates go, uh, there has been an increased amount of tra- mandatory training that has, has occurred. Um, that is by the state, it is partially funded, and a lot of times they'll help us uh pay for the training or to backfill staff. Uh, but uh it, it never covers a hundred percent of that. Once again, not a bad thing, it's just uh an impact to the budget. Uh, increased detention costs, when I say detention costs, I mean jail costs or electronic monitoring. And that's directly related to reclassifying drug crimes to misdemeanors. Once again, that was a state decision to, to reclassify those. Uh, that has an impact on our criminal justice uh costs. And then data reporting on use of force, one of the uh bills of past, a couple of years ago, that is supposed to be in effect by the end of this year, which it will not be, not, have nothing to do with us, is statewide data collection on reporting use of force, so every time an officer uses force, uh and that could be very low level to lethal force, they have to complete a use of force report, and the state wants to take all those reports and put them together. Uh, but it's not that simple, because our use of force report is slightly different than maybe Pialups or Milton or whoever. So it's getting everybody on the same, um, collecting the same data elements. And then also, you know, to do an effective analysis of this, it requires uh WSU, who's the, the school that has, that was selected, to also have access to other background data that may not be in that use of force report. But is germane to, you know, determining, you know, trends and, and if uses of force um in the state, you know, you know, whether they being used differently and against different groups of people. So that is not funded, but it's definitely something that affects us, as one of the reasons why we switched our um, use of force reporting to a, a product called Blue Beam. Uh, it's more the industry standard in the state, but there still are differences between how we set up Blue Beam versus maybe how Pialups sets up their Blue Beam. Uh, budget impacts, uh we have definitely seen an increase in severity of crimes. Uh, which often leads to lengthy investigation. Some of the investigations that we've done over the last couple of years have taken um months to, to get ready to even send to the prosecutor. Um, I wish it was like TV, you know, solve every crime in an hour and get those lab results back in five minutes. It's unfortunately not the way it, it happens. Uh, it takes significant time and resources. Um, challenging time to hire police officers right now, you know, we're sitting with two vacancies today. Um, and it, it's a challenge to find qualified, good employees that want to be police officers. Uh, we've, you know, been using hiring bonuses, uh which so- sometimes are effective, sometimes are not effective, but that does have some increased costs to the city. Fulfilling goals, I was needed and valued services, and we do that by responding to, to calls for service and doing traffic emphasis and making arrests. Council party, they had everything in public safety and then several excellent govern- government related to partnerships and uh enhanced services. Alright, so let's go through some of their ongoing costs. We'll start at the top, detention services, so once again, that's jail and electronical monitoring. Four hundred and five thousand dollars for the biennium. As you know, we don't have a jail, we contract with a number of jails throughout the region. Pialup, Edenclaw, Score, Nisqually, and Pierce County. Um, each of those have a different daily rate, sometimes a booking fee. Uh, and then a lot of this is out of, outside our control. Yes, we, we can control who we book in some cases, not all cases, in some cases. But whatever the court then, after the, when the case is adjudicated or even pre-adjudication, you know, does the judge hold them in, in jail? That, that's outside our control. Do they get sentenced to three hundred and sixty-five days? Totally outside our control. We can control what jail they do their time in, you know, if they're in the most expensive daily rate, maybe we move into a a, a cheaper jail that helps save some costs, but a lot of this is outside our, our control. Next one is our dispatch fees and records fees to South Sound nine one one. So uh that's six hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars over the biennium, that pays for people that answer the nine one one calls, and then who then dispatch the calls uh out to our police officers. Um, they also manage our records management software, um, and do some after-hours warrant work and protection order entry. Block cameras, um, eighty-five thousand dollars for that new technology, um, Chief Merkey presented on that a, a few weeks ago. The twenty twenty-five amount is covered by a forty-five thousand dollar grant, so the balance of forty thousand dollars is what is uh not. Um, but it's in, in the budget, but it's not, it's a new, new request. Uh, we do on a regular basis replace our firearms, so that's our handguns and our, our long guns, our rifles. So we do have uh some rifles that are up for replacement over this biennium, so thirty thousand dollars for that. Ammunition continues to be an expensive uh but necessary training aids, that's eighteen thousand dollars, and that's all sorts of ammunition, handgun, long gun, uh etcetera. Um, the metro animal services per capita, so while we run metro animal services here as the city of Sumner, the per capita that we, we pay for that service comes out of the police department's budget. Every city pays a per capita, including us, uh so that's a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars for the biennium.
Each, or each?
It's eight dollars per capita, plus a licensing true-up, so this represents the eight dollars per capita over two years.
That's just Sumner's charge.
Uh, every city's eight dollars uh on their base fee, but the licensing per capita uh we pay a little bit less, we pay a dollar eighty-five per capita licensing, so that means that we sell animal licenses. We need to sell a dollar eighty-five per capita worth of animal licenses. If we only sell eighty-five cents the city's on the hook for that other dollar. Contract cities, so other cities, the exception of Sumner and Pialup, pay two dollars and thirty-five cents in their licensing per capita. We'll cover that in a lot of detail when we get to the metro budget. Uh, radio access and maintenance fees, so every single radio, either handheld radio or a mobile radio in, in a car. We pay a monthly reoccurring charge to be on the, this, the network to use that system, so that's fifty-one thousand dollars. Uh, the metro SWAT per capita, similar to metro animal services. This, the SWAT interlocal agreement has a per capita uh cost sharing model, so it's ninety-five hundred. And then bulletproof vest replacements. Sorry, Kathy, can't see behind, behind you there. Uh, we're replacing nine of those over the biennium for sixteen thousand four hundred. Police department had a number of one-time uh requests, um. Some of the, and we'll go through these uh ballistic helmets for our patrol officers. So right now, our, our, not every single police officer that works the road has a ballistic helmet assigned to them. So this would uh give everybody a ballistic helmet. Uh, SWAT night vision, um, we have two SWAT operators, they have night visions that are at end of life and need to be replaced, so that's replacing both of those at twenty thousand, ten thousand dollars each. Night vision monocular, uh two of those for our patrol officers. So this is to allow them to operate at night, it's just a one-piece monocular they can look through if they're looking for a suspect in, out in the open, even in a, in a, in a building, those can be useful. Uh, defensive tactics, training mats, twelve hundred dollars for those. Um, that's so they can do some additional ground defensive tactics training. Um, we're gonna locate those in the old cemetery building, where we're repurposing for some police use. Um, a patrol drone. So most agencies around us, they have a, a drone that is issued to their patrol officers. Um, they use it to search for suspects. Uh, there's a separate type of drone system that we applied for a grant for, we are gonna get the grant, but we've been waiting about two years for the federal government to process the paperwork, but that, that's a more uh sophisticated drone that helps crime scene mapping, this one is really just every day out, you know, uh working on the, on the street. Right now, we, when we need a drone, which is on a fairly regular basis, we utilize one of our neighboring jurisdictions that'll come down and fly a drone for us. Uh, also, um, expansion of our less lethal uh options, so this is four pepperball launchers. Just like, think about a paintball gun that shoots pepperballs, and then four uh forty millimeter less lethal launchers at five thousand. Those would not be assigned to specific officers, but they'd be available one per, per team, and they could grab them out of the out of the rack and bring them out on the road with them. Any questions on their costs?
Does it have any ideas how to make this into an enterprise button?
Uh, they did ask for a replacement patrol bicycle, uh that was cut from the budget, the they do have um some bicycles now that we might be able to fix up and use. Um, it, it's a nice-to-have, not a need-to-have. And then the uh police actually has some personnel changes, so in this budget includes two new police officers, one in each year of the biennium of the biennium, uh so you can see twenty twenty-five, uh the wages and benefits is about a hundred and sixty-eight thousand, but then there's a startup cost of a vehicle. As well as some one-time equipment, so uh the vehicle in year one in twenty twenty-five is slightly lower, because uh you might recall that we're promoting um sergeant house log to lieutenant, so this is actually to buy lieutenant a vehicle, because it doesn't, it's not a fully equipped patrol car. His car would then go back into the uh patrol fleet, and then a new police car for twenty twenty-six is eighty thousand dollars. So justification for adding police, right now, uh we've been at the same staffing uh for about, um we added an S R O position and one officer in the seventeen years of the police department with, with the city, so obviously, our city continues to grow, we have a lot of growth on the horizon, and making sure that we have adequate staffing to stay ahead of that growth is really important. And this would provide additional uh patrol shift coverage as well, because uh, you know, it we get down to, especially on certain days, we might only have two police officers working the road, so it's, it'd be nice to have a little extra cushion on there.
So I agree with you on that. Being on the safety committee, one of the things that we've talked about, not only that, it's just the mental health of the officers and the burnout potential, right, for them. So I think that's just a key factor that needs to be kept in mind. You can't work them to death. Right? And there's a lot going on these days, so I would just add that to what you were saying.
Oh, yeah, I was just curious, uh just with the changes that you've mentioned uh in the community and how high of a priority this was on our survey. Is there, what are we looking at? I mean, I feel like I almost feel like two new officers in the next couple of years, is that gonna be adequate? And it do we reevaluate that? I just feel like it was a very high priority. It seems like it's a problem that's growing. Uh just curious how this how that's evaluated and if it's decided in the budget or if there's a way to do it in between budgets, if it something changes or continues to. Anyways, just curious.
No, I think that's that's an excellent point. Council matter offers it's something that we need to continually evaluate and you will have an opportunity. You can always amend the budget to add more more staffing. I think one of the challenges that Mr. Stefan's alluded to, it's very difficult to hire these positions right now. We have two vacancies right now and we've been sitting on two vacancies for a number of months. Um so even if we add them, I don't know how quickly we can fill them.
I mean, you're kind of collecting money when you're not having those positions filled. So I don't think you necessarily need to increase the budget. I mean, I I would go with what you have here, but you know, by the time you get them filled and then for them to successfully get into the program was, you know, has been a challenge. So I just think, you know, we need to have good police in our city or good staffing, so.
I would just wanna make a clarification. So we're down two and we're gonna hire two, so we're looking at real in the next two years, so that's gonna be interesting, but yeah, good luck.
I would then just add to that, um we need four. I mean, should we pull it this way a little bit and get more sooner? Because of the length of time it takes to get them?
They're asking, should we accelerate the twenty six into twenty five?
Yeah.
We certainly could. We could even uh do it at the mid-year, July first is an option. Because as Councilman Ranky kind of alluded to and and Councilman Potato, even if you if you are an entry level, uh it could be several months before they get into the police academy and then you have you know, almost five month police academy, a three month FTO. I mean, you're you're at least a year before you have an officer ready to work solo patrol. So that is something that council wished to do that, that is an amendment that you could consider as we go through the process.
Okay, thanks.
Did you have any?
All right, last one. Drug fund. All right, so this is um
This is a special revenue.
That's revenue, thank you. Um so the the drug fund is is kind of a unique thing. Um it really helps us fund routine drug investigations uh relating to the possession and our distribution of illegal controlled substances. This fund has been rather stagnant for the better part of of seventeen plus years. And that's because uh prior to that, we had a representative of our department on a federal task force that was involved in larger drug investigations. And then if there was a seizure associated with those drug investigations, a portion of that seizure would come back to the 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 home agency. So now we don't have it. So how does this fund grow? It really is drug seizures that our officers do, and our officers do do some drug seizures from time to time. But they may not be on the larger dollar amount, so it's not growing that rapidly. So they allowed expenditures in the drug fund is really to support those investigations. Uh what's important to remember is you can't supplant other sources or expenditures. So for example, it wouldn't be appropriate for us to buy the night vision for the SWAT team out of here, even though it is usually a clear nexus to illegal drug activity. Because the likely purchased beforehand was either drug funds or now you you're supplanting something you already own. So uh it's not allowed use of those funds. So uh what are the budget impacts? Kind of like I mentioned, you know, we don't have that ongoing revenue stream into this fund. Which uh also is impacted by the state not supporting regional drug task forces. And the council priorities, it's public safety again. So the only uh programmed expenditure here is uh some investigation overtime. So if we get something that our officers need to spend some extra time that's drug related, we can build some overtime to this fund. Questions about the drug fund? Do you anything you want to add?
Can I circle back to development services? I just want to answer Councilwoman Brerke's question. So I see what you're looking at. You're looking at specifically in dev services, two thousand and twenty two actuals for like personal salaries was four hundred and forty seven thousand and then it jumped to eight hundred and seventy three thousand in twenty three. It was a change in accounting. Prior to that, our labor distributions for the development services staff were split. So a portion went to the general fund, a portion went to water, a portion to a portion to storm. Um and that was specifically for the development, the dev services director as well as the engineer. And I believe one of the permit specialists. We consolidated and we moved a hundred percent of their salary cost into the general fund, specifically into development services. So we could begin to really corral and um get a cost analysis of what development services cost for the city. So that was just, it was an accounting change of splitting their labor distribution between multiple funds and then consolidating all into the general fund. The number of FTE stayed the same.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
All right, before I go over the schedule, any other questions about what we covered tonight?
Um, this is for Cassandra and it's just, and I guess you guys as well. So how many layers of people vet all these numbers before they come here? And is it top down, bottom up, or both ways? Just, you know, figuratively.
It's an octopus.
I'm sure it is.
So so the so it goes from the top down first. The mayor and Jason really kind of give a budget direction to the department directors as a call as part of a call to budget memo. The department directors review it. Um depending on the department, they may do it all themselves, they may delegate it out. The department entries, the budget entries are entered in. They get, and then they start coming back up the chain to the department director. And then they come to um finance, we kind of collate it all. And then it comes into the departmental meetings. That's the mayor, us three, the department managers, the department director is always included. And then they bring in anyone else that really touches the budget. From that point, it all goes into the big financial model, specifically in the general fund. Um and that's line item by line item. And then I go through that with our staff and the mayor, and then we bring that to council. And then council gives your input input, and so then just kind of up and down.
Okay, so thank you. So you've got standard work in a process, basically is what you just said.
Yep.
Um and then this one, if you don't know it today, although I'll be really shocked if you don't know it within a smidge. Um yearly, uh what's your percent variance uh on the forecast versus actuals?
It depends on the line item.
Okay, can you just roll it up to the very top?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay, so that's just something to kind of noodle on. So I understand light item by light item or maybe department by department, but just even at the very top, like I'm thinking it's not gonna be a huge number, but you can look at it. You don't need to answer it.
It kind of depends on the line item and the category. We try and come relatively close and one of the one of the ways we do that is through our quarterly budget amendments. If we see something that is going to have a variance or there's a programmatic change, that's what we're bringing to quarterly. Also for state uh for um state statute, we do not have the authority to spend more than our biennial appropriation. Simple as that. So we're always watching that as well. So our variances are gonna stay close. We're never gonna come really over again because we're obligated to stay within our appropriated amount. Some things we may come under if um just because of timing, we're not able to complete a project or not on what cost came under. Sometimes we just let the appropriation lapse at the end of the biennial, sometimes it gets carried over, but I'll get some more more detail.
But basically you adjust quarterly and you have a ceiling that you can't go over, so.
Yes.
So it's probably that much variance. Okay, thanks.
One more question. So I skipped the legal fund. I was just curious, in twenty twenty two, there was also a big jump. I didn't ask it at the time, but I was just curious if that was the time you hired someone new, maybe? I think Andrea knows legal fund under.
I did a record specialist position that year.
That was, I think.
Brand new staff position, yeah.
Right, is that it, guys?
Okay, coming up Wednesday noon here. Start with some lunch, y'all. All full before we we talk budget with you. And so we're gonna talk about streets. We're gonna talk about general fund, street operations, our sidewalk funds, streets capital, we're gonna go over our utilities. Uh so we're really gonna break this down into maintenance and operation, capital improvement projects. Boss, be on the third one. MNO CIPs and um.
The more you think.
It's been a long day already.
I think that's really good.
You'll you'll be excited, I promise you. Lots of pictures on Wednesday.
Debt service.
Debt sand.
And lunch.
And lunch.
Did we hear, talk about lunch?
Yeah, it'll be lunch. So noon, try to get you out of here before five, but it'll probably be closer to five than it is to three, so. All right.
Thank you, you guys.
So I will say that this meeting is adjourned at eight oh five.
Costco, Costco sandwich. Costco sandwiches, uh chips.
I heard that, but I was already.
And I'll even even have refrigerated. I know, then I can.
Should be pretty easy.
It's starting to buy donuts again?
Yes.